United States of America, interior public, which is stance, I'm an issue. Let their team just.
Good morning. Sorry for sorry for the inconvenience, but a lot of changes are happening right now. So next I have is the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for today.
I will second it's been moved and seconded in discussion. Are you none all fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye, most carries. Next is approval of the minutes of March 11, 13, and 16.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from March 11, 13, and 16.
I will second. It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Are you none all fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye, most carries. Next we have is approval of claims for March 18.
I'll make a motion to approve the March 18, 2020 claims for payment.
I will second. It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Are you none all fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye, most carries. In addition to the Rural Iowa Waste Management Association to the Abesus Plan, which is the I insurance that we carry. You had a question that said table it for a week so we get more information off it. Is that right?
Well, I I just wondered if we open it up to Rural Iowa. Does that open it up to everyone else that would want?
And we would do all that administrative work for it and reimbursement is zero.
Yeah, so I guess. To talk to the auditor's office about about that Rebecca. Right?
Yes, speak up.
Oh, all right. So I I just wondered if we need to postpone it for a week so that we can talk to the county auditor's office regarding regarding that if it's an issue to open this up to all of the entities that are currently under the county's health insurance or if that's an issue. So I would almost I would think if we could just postpone that for a week.
Would you make a motion to table?
Yes, I'll make a motion to table that then for this week.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, most carriers. Next is workforce development merger with Region Six and Region 10. This is something that's been going on for a while. Iowa's last state to. Start thinking about anything. Currently, we have about a $400,000 plan or reimbursements that come into us. 10 10% of that can be used as administration. Doesn't give us a lot of money for administration. We are the smallest region. And by merging with other with Region 10, it allows they have about a million dollars. So that puts them at a million four for the administration for both regions. And if we don't do it, they're going to cherry pick us apart and put us wherever we want anyway.
Okay.
So this is the purpose of this.
Okay. All right. So I will make a motion to approve the workforce development merger with Region Six and Region 10.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded in discussion.
When does this become effective then?
Uh, right. Right now, all the counties have to approve it, then they'll start working on 2080. The state has to allow to approve it, no different than how the mental health went. So we're just saying we're willing to do it, merge with them. The state has to approve it, then we start working on 2080, and then we'll have to bring 2080 back to everybody.
Okay. All right.
Any other discussion? Are you none all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, most carriers. Now I have is an application for use of county courthouse ground. Jody, I forgot to ask you, do you have an issue with any of this? It's it's for the Iowa ride.
July 14.
They want to use, I believe, the north side. Yeah, the north side of the courthouse. No, no problems. Okay.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve the application for the use of the courthouse grounds then on July 14 or the Iowa's ride.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded in discussion. BJ is the one putting this on. The group request net is Iowa rides of Eldora. And if we are still in this virus or this scare, obviously, I would deny.
They only want to use the north side.
Right.
I don't know. 10 over there.
So there'll be other vendors around.
Yeah, so there'll be vendors around the square and then like that's only spot they're gonna be like.
Okay.
If if it goes through.
Yeah. So will everyone who wants to use a part of this work really have to submit a separate proposal like this to get people to use their spot?
If they're on the grounds.
Okay. Okay.
Any other discussion? Are you none all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, most carriers. Approved for the commercial tax abatement policy. Angela, you want to talk on this?
Yeah, so the advisory council and I have been working on this, Gerald, probably December or January. Just. There's not a ton of words in there, but basically what this is is just a commercial abatement policy. So if someone were to come in and want to build a new shop or whatever, I was wondering what sort of options we can offer them. On the back page it says, so for example, new industry over $250,000 in additional cash capital investment. So if someone were to come in and wanted to build a $300,000 shop for whatever, we'll say, okay, yeah, that's great. You need to create at least three time jobs or three full time jobs paying at least minimum wage. And if they meet that criteria at the very minimum, then we'll look at rebate their taxes for a portion of the 10 years. Um, if it's a lower amount of capital investment, we do a lower amount or a lesser number of years of rebate. And the same goes for if someone's going to expand their business, they may have to increase the property value by 15%, add at least one more full time job, and then going on there. It does say here, the key is the at least part. So they will enter into it with the county. And obviously, if they're building a $4 million building, we're not going to say, yeah, you just need three jobs. You know, we'll say, if you're a manufacturing company, you need at least 25 jobs over the life of the agreement. They'll recertify every year. And if they don't meet their job requirement, we won't rebate their taxes for that portion of the year. What other questions?
Sound good?
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the commercial tax abatement policy.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded in discussion.
I just have a question. Are you abating all of that?
There's a she's she's. Yeah, she's got a schedule here. It looks like it would be over five years for a couple of situations and 10.
We would we would set that up through economic development. You would establish it through the board, and then it would be approved at some time.
Yeah. Yeah. So they would meet with me, we'd decide if they qualify, whatever, whatever, the advisory board would meet with them. They were going to make a recommendation. I would make a recommendation. You bring those support supervisors, and then they would have the final say, and then we would go with the auditor's office to.
I think this is the same type of plan that we had for.
We used to have something like this in the enterprise office.
Right. So this would just be for any of them.
I think we did this for like NRP.
One of my other questions is.
The other wind farm.
Is that 250,000 assessed value or 50,000 investment?
Investment.
Because I don't want to spend over 250,000 on buildings, so.
Right. And that would be for like a brand new, they're building something, whatever. And then the other one would be for just improvements to their building. So if they have to increase the assessed value to 15.
So a little bit of your main thing. Otherwise, we used to have to do all.
Yeah, yeah. That's the whole goal. If I mess up, you're out of town.
We just seconded that. I didn't worry about it.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Are you no more? We'll call.
Renee.
Hi.
Lance.
Aye, most carriers. Next we have is the approval of the signage grant.
Yeah. So in Actley, we have this program called the Community Betterment Signage Grant. Anyway, so basically what it is, is it is a grant up to $500 to a new business, to any business wanting to put in new signage. So for example, John Insland, who owns Cougar Fitness in Actley, he put vinyl decals all over the front of the gym and got the name, whatever, whatever. That was about $1,600 project. He applied the signage grant program, gave us his receipts, and then we reimbursed him $500 towards his sign. We started out with, I think, $2,500 in that account, and it's been totally utilized since then. And so I thought it'd be a good idea to do it for the county. I know I have it in my budget for this year. But it's just a little help towards small businesses that are wanting to get started, to get their business, get their business assigned, get visibility out there, get it going. Again, we would only rebate up to $500. And we talked on Monday about it being like countywide. So no matter where you are in the county, you can use it. It doesn't have to be just for noncorporate areas.
Well, this you'll go up to $500, so they have to match up the buy. Say they have to spend a thousand.
Yeah, yeah. So if their sign is $200, we'll go up to $100. So we'll do 50% match up to $500.
Okay.
Um, I read through this and I didn't unless I missed it, I didn't see that it pertained only to signage. Does that need to be clarified?
We've always just called it the signage grant. However, like I said, John had like vinyl decals. TNS Auto Parts in Actley has vinyl decals. I think Beans on Butler has vinyl decals and the sign up there. So maybe that's probably why I didn't put in just signage, but that is what it's for. I can clarify that in there.
Yeah, it does say for for exterior cosmetic projects. So I guess.
Yeah, I can clarify that.
I mean, I didn't. I just didn't know if that's clear enough. But I mean, as long as you know what it is and.
We can. Why don't we have a break back to us then?
Yeah. I can clarify that to you guys next week.
Okay, all right. So I make a motion to table that for this for this week.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Are you none? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, most carriers. Next we have is a change of supervisors representative on the Board of Health. This is coming about because with the new 2080 that was created with Fremont Home Care, we should not have the same representative on the Board of Health and Fremont Home Care.
I know I'm the alternate for the Board of Health, so.
I should make the motion to appoint Renee to the Board of Health and removing BJ from that and making me the alternate.
Okay, I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Are you none? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, most carriers. Now we have is the COV ID 19 update.
I believe Dave was going to provide that. Dave or Thomas.
We lost him.
Yeah.
Why don't I come back?
Yeah, we'll come back to that.
So now I have is an appointment to the County Public Information Officer for contact. And Renee, you were suggested that we need to be that contact person and sit on that commission. And now that you sit on the Board of Health, you'd be a great candidate for that. I will make that motion.
All right, I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? This was a recommendation of Thomas to put Renee as a representative for the appointment. Thomas just walked in for the Public Information Officer in contact. Any other discussion? Are you none? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, most carriers. We can go back to the COV ID 19 update.
Thank you. So yesterday, the governor put the proclamation out that there is no zero gatherings over 10 people. Those bars, restaurants, everything that has anything over 10 people. I'm currently on a webinar right now or a conference call with DPS and Homeland Security. The question is, is if facilities are out of compliance. So we're.
Out of compliance.
But warning you, there's a we need to do something on emergent that Zoom meetings will be the future because we can't meet this way. It is the governor's proclamation makes law. And then we're talking about how law enforcement is going to handle and how DIA might do inspections and appeals. We're not going to worry about DIA. But they're encouraging that restaurants that are found out of compliance and still serving people inside the restaurant or inside the bar, whatever, they get a warning, and then it is a misdemeanor under Iowa code. And they've cited the code, and there I'll get you the section that they're sending us. But at this point, we need to be, number one, we're encouraging social distancing. We're not trying to tell people that their lives have to stop. Distance in the grocery stores, distance when you're on the street. The next thing is that Iowa Falls Hanson Family Hospital has opened their COVID testing today, and it is by call only. So anybody going need wanting to be tested, number one, they have to call either 211 with the state or the number that Hanson Family Hospital has put out and go through that questionnaire process. Then they'll be referred to the drive in testing site. Then they'll have to go through another set of questions and more demographics information for them to get the test. And then they'll drive in, get swabbed, and 90% of these, 95% of these people will go home. They will be self isolated at home and then await their test results of anywhere from 48 hours up to 72 hours, depending on how long the lab takes in trying to get those all processed. Then the other is where I sent out an email yesterday to all of you about essential personnel and the daycare question. I'm still handling that today. Don't plan on that being something that is going to happen in the next 24 hours. I got a negative response from the person, so I'm trying to handle that one. Going forward, and there is a so Homeland Security is sending out a document I will send to all of city officials that I have on the commission and 911 board. It talks about the law that says from here forward that you can just go to a electronic meeting because there is a disaster in place. We don't have to go through board. They don't have to go through city council actions. They don't have to throw in them. They just have to post that they're going electronic. And there's a law that covers that because we now have a declaration that says we can't meet in large groups. Dave and Renee, John Lynn has come in from Iowa Falls, volunteered to come help in the EOC. He works with the Air National Guard. He was a great asset yesterday. We spent about 14 hours in here yesterday working on planning and processing. We're starting back at it today, and we'll just keep pushing information out as we get information. So plan on seeing a lot of emails, but it will be as concise as I can give it to you, or it'll be directly from IDPH, Homeland Security, or the Governor's Office. Any questions?
I don't have any. Does anybody have any questions?
Is there any online? Just a minute. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have is closing courthouse to the public. We aren't the first one to talk about this. There's quite a quite a few that have already closed. My suggestion, I see we have the department heads here. Obviously, we need their input on this, but after talking to quite a few of them or reading the emails, I should close the courthouse to the public and stop everybody at the front entrance there. We have security up front that could either funnel people through with permission or Dropbox in some cases. You guys have to tell me how you want this to happen, but I from my standpoint, I think we need to close public access.
I would agree with that unless we go into depth as to who has access and who doesn't, mainly because if my heart's a fork, let somebody in, doesn't let somebody else in, we will put ourselves up to a lot of liability as far as profile, even whatever you want to say. So unless there is exact protocol of who gets in and who doesn't, you got to stop it for everybody.
The department would have to allow them in. Say they want to go to Michelle's. Michelle would verify down to your staff whether or not that person come through. Does that sound?
Yeah, I have several scenarios going in my head. I feel that this time is is here so we can prevent as much as we can likely go on in the treasurer's office and all your offices. Most everything can be done online, by the mail, or at the front door in exchange. There's processes we can make to help our customers service them. It's just not going to be at our front counter. The only place that we would need a situation that would have to come into the courthouse would be if we did keep our driver's license open by appointment only and have them call and find out what their needs are. 99% of the things don't have to be done exactly right now. The governor has expanded stating that if your driver's license is expired as of January 16, your license is not really expired by law right now. So with that provision, you know, people that are in Flint, they can wait until this goes over. If there is an emergency type of situation, I mean, we're trying to think of an emergency situation for driver's license, then we could hit a 111 by appointment, meet them at the front door, bring them to our office, do their transaction, and exit them out the door as well. So or we could just not do any driver's licenses whatsoever. I've been hearing both directions. Among the places, the DOT currently right now, their state stations are only allowing three people in. They have to be 10 feet away. They are serviced. It would be very difficult for my staff to be 10 feet away from a person with a driver's license in my office. So if we're complying with that, I don't know who would be in compliance and how would it be, whether we want to take that and execute that. No, that's a decision that we have to make. I mean, you're also considering that whoever comes through that door cannot be within 10 feet from my person. So, you know, and that's P for this right here. They stand and chat. I mean, I I woke people up yesterday because I was like, I can't have you stand here and chat. You gotta move. And so and my idea for my customers, I'm going to have myself or one of my staff come to the door and then exit them out the door until their transaction is done. They're going to give me a phone number. I'm going to call them when it's done. They can walk back up to the entrance and we can, you know, give them their paperwork. So, yeah, and I don't and I don't, you and I talked about that yesterday, and I think that's fine. I just made certain for, you know, we've got people coming in for the driver's license. Again, you just open yourself up for a lot of liability. If you tell someone they've got to leave, and they're like, well, you let so and so go in. And you're asking you're asking us to make a lot of judgment calls on the fly, and that makes me a little fine to do it. I mean, but I just want you all to know that if we do it, it's going to be dangerous.
Have you contacted other counties, Michelle, to see how they're handling the counties that are close to the public, how they're handling it?
Yeah, there's a lot of county driver's license stations that are just closed, and their their staff is all still working, doing other transactions with the tax and motor vehicle, and they're close to the public, period. And we do have some that are by appointment and are, you know, one person at a time. So it goes, there's both scenarios out there. But the ones that do have are allowing people are actually taking their name and address. They're documenting who's coming in, at what time, and what their business is, and then they are keeping that information as to who's been in their in their building, in their office, what transaction they did on those that are allowing to come into the office. So it's just a matter of of what we want to do. Are we going to let anybody in in a certain situation? Are we just not going to allow the public to come in and do every transaction we can through the door?
I think due to the governor's proclamation, I mean, this is my opinion only, which allows for continuing continuing to drive on an expired license. I think it also included driving or operating your vehicle with expired license plates. And I think there's been directive to the sheriff's.
Who can you take care of that? I mean, there's Dropbox.
Right. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So I'm talking person, any person to person contact. I would, I mean, I would try to limit all that. I don't think we need to have driver's license open.
Yeah.
Do what they can do by mail.
Possibly even once they open, wouldn't be driver's license, motor vehicle on tax, it'll be handled.
Right, by mail.
Dropbox, online. If they don't have a computer, they can call me. I can help them out with that. There's many, many provisions that we can help them. They don't even have to come to the office. They can drop it off on the street, or they can drop it off, you know, at at the front entrance, or we can help them on the phone, or they have it still available, you know, on all those situations except for driver's license.
I mean, I don't I don't know what an emergency situation would be for driver's license.
Unless somebody was expired prior to the proclamation.
So are you, I mean, this is probably goes for everybody. Are you all talking about only possibly serving those that come to the courthouse if they call ahead?
Um, I haven't really thought through that entire process of that if a call had appointment be the only way, or if I just have a staff member there asking what they're going, what they need to do, and then we can advise them that they need to drop their box payments off, or if they have a title transfer, then we're going to need to take their paperwork. We'll have to go upstairs, process it, give their fees, come back down, get their payment method, and then I would prefer to just mail it to them. If they would want to wait, they'd have to go back to their car again, and we'd call them when the paperwork was done, and they could come and pick it up. I would highly encourage everybody not to even just come. They do have a third of days to get a transfer. But and they can call us to help with the transaction. They can scan their titles from back. We can get all the paperwork necessary, scan it back to them, and they can provide us a file of paperwork by mail or drop it off in the Dropbox outside, and then we can mail it back to them. There's some provisions that we can help them out without them physically having to be in our in our building to serve them and still still get their transactions done.
All right.
I prefer to deal with them through electronic process or mail, anything like that, because take vital records, for instance, if they need to serve by copy, the state is even close their office and they're working from home. So they aren't even going to be able to get it from the state if that's, you know, what they need to do. I just think it's going to be safer for all of us, and I can't see an emergency, you know, within within my office that people would need to come knocking at the door that we can't handle otherwise.
Okay. Jessica, I know you sent an email, but.
Right. I think there's nothing that we can't handle that couldn't be handled by email or regular mail.
mail. Motor registration, they can still continue to do updates online. They can mail them to us. We can still, if this goes on long enough, have apps and we can go to mail. My only concern right now is that I have to take papers from candidates filing until 25th, but those could be dropped off at the front door, and I can put them and retrieve them, or I can meet with the person one-on-one if they have an appointment. Those are the only people I would allow in. The other thing is, you know, drainage work orders and things. We still need to do work, but they can force on email, phone. We can, we have so many things, everything. I recommend shutting it, but I would caution that, and I might be late to meetings, I wasn't here at the beginning, you can't close off people going into the court. So someone is going to need to say, where are you going? Oh, the auditor's office, sorry, you can't go in, because the court system is housed in a courthouse, and they are not closing right now at all, and they're not visiting. So we have to have the ability to allow those people to go in. And then the other thing, my concern was, I, I ask that we recognize the two people, one from each abstractor's office that come in and were independently and do not interact with staff to be able to still enter and retrieve their documents as needed. I would, I would ask that we treat them the same as an employee coming to court, and that's, that's all I have.
And I, I would second that. I mean, I think that our team can, I mean, we're right there. We're going to, and I, I'm going to start by asking where they, if they have a business is, obviously with Dave and Jennifer.
Thank you, I was going to call her again. We, we know who they are, and we know what they're doing, and have a problem with that. I think that I really have to communicate to the two of them that they are the representative of the courthouse that's allowed them to go in, and if for some reason, like if Jennifer is no longer coming over to do the work yet, Tim or I can't remember his last name.
Thank you.
And if anyone's coming over, that they would give us a heads up, that they're not just regularly sending people, that the only two people, one from each office, are allowed to come in. And only because they do not interact with us. I, they just, they don't, right? They don't interact with staff, they don't interact with the public. They retrieve documents from books, they know how to run their copiers. Certainly, we have disinfectant wipes and stuff available everywhere that we can continue by our equipment as we use it, and so today. So that's just my, that's just my only request on this. I would also, actually, I'll say this too. I went to a local business this morning, and I won't identify them, they were absolutely prepared for this in the way that I got out of my car, walked out there. When I got to the door, there was a little stop sign on the door handle that said, "Stop." And I was like, I was taken aback because I didn't read any of the language that was posted on the door. I just saw the stop sign on the door handle, and I was like, oh. You know, and, and it just caught my surprise, and then I realized there was a post saying, and it said, "Go back to your car, call our office. We will send staff out to you, this, that, the other, whatever." I don't think that we should put a big sign there either. I think that having a stop sign on the door handle, or right above it, or whatever that says, "Do not enter," call, whatever, you know, I think that gets people's attention better than the big sign, which I agree with.
Right.
Because I'm telling you, I missed it, and had not heard of that little stop sign there, I would have tried to go in, and it was, it was good. And then the person came, saw me, I didn't have to go back to my car and haul, and came over, and we talked through a closed door to do our business, and it worked out just fine. I think that it can work out fine with people being at the front, that they don't have to greet every single person in person, that they can actually probably speak with people. And then they're going to allow them, they have the ability to push the door and open it up on the inside to allow those that can be entry to come into the building. And of course, people that stop and say, well, I have court at nine o'clock, or I have court at 10:30, or whatever, she can, she can push the button and allow them in. But if they're, they're just paying tickets, they can do that online. They don't need access to the court upstairs. And so I really think stopping everybody at the door works, and then only those that, you know, have court, have court, or, and, and, you know, we can, I, I know if your court can even provide her with a schedule showing that there actually is court that day, so that not everybody can just walk up and be like, I have court, and then get access. She's going to know, and her staff will know that there's court going on, or there's not court, so you don't need access.
I agree.
Am I someone on the right path, or?
As far as court?
Yes.
Yeah, most budgets are taking care of giving people plenty of options for not having to appear in person, or things, so it's probably going to be a more non, non-advantage, non-issue. The traffic for corporate facilities has been to be reduced significantly.
Sure. I just know, we got a call from Tina yesterday for the clerk report, and she stressed the importance of knowing that they were not closing and that there was no access to court, but not necessarily paying the tickets and things like that, because those are things that they can apply may or not online.
I think it'll be confusing at first for people, and it'll, it'll take some time until we can get whatever our action is today, get that out to the public through media and whatever, maybe some, and also through radio that, as far as what we are going to be doing and what the plan is, so. But in the meantime, I think, Carrie, you're going to be a little bit overloaded until people get used to this.
And I think the number of people we're actually talking about is probably pretty low, the people that are going to need the access as far as court, or, or, except with the members' office. I mean, if we're overloaded by that, we'd have bigger problems.
I would direct those people to the elevator only.
What's that?
I would direct those people to the elevator only that are going to the courtroom.
Yeah.
That, and they aren't going through the staffs.
They're going to down, yeah. And for the most part, just so you know, we are at Hanson Medical as well, so Bob will be kind of the point person at the courthouse for a while, and we're not going to try, I mean, you'll have, obviously, the three quarters that we always have kind of in and out, but Bob, he wants it the most, so once we make him up to speed and have him kind of know what's going on, it won't be a problem. And, you know, make sure all the departments have this cell phone directly and can call them if anything.
So do you think it's important, the people that are going to be allowed in the building, to ask them if they have a paper of 100% or 11%, if they've been outside the United States for the last 14 days, or if they have a runny nose or a sore throat or cough?
I think that those are probably, speaking of signage at the door, that's what they need to put at the door. That's pretty standard of where you're going now. I'm going to trust, which is stupid of me to say this, I know, but if you're coming to the courthouse and you have any of those symptoms, then if, if you're coming out of seizing, I can tell you that you need to go home. You know, I, I mean, and I, like I said, I have no problem with it right now, I really don't. And so, you know, if they, if they're calling you to make an appointment, you know, you might want to run down that list with them.
Right.
If there's somebody coming in for court, I don't think we can really do a lot, but just say, move along, get to the elevator, get past me. And those really should be the only two, other than, you know, the exceptions Jessica cited, those should be the only two general level reasons for people to be in the building this time.
I just do know that Michelle did have two customers earlier this week, wanted just come home from a cruise and wanted just come home from an overseas flight.
Yeah.
And they went to her counter, and they were coughing and sneezing all over, so...
I don't know. I don't know if they were coughing.
Well, that's what one of the employees told me, that they were.
Well, yeah, and it made me, and I can tell you, all right, Bob's probably not going to stop anybody at the door because he thinks he's going to be everything. But for the most part, I would say that if it's, you know, obviously, they're visibly sick. The biggest concern I have about that would be more so the people that call for an appointment are people that are coming with someone for court. And like I said, there's, we can't tell them now, we just have to move along and get in the elevator. And, you know, make sure the people on three know to be vigilant about their disinfectant I mean, there's, sadly, there's, short of shutting everything down, that's all we can do. And it's going to get worse and worse as time goes by.
So I'm going to keep going around, Dawn. Any questions, concerns?
We can do whatever, honestly, we only have two things that they have to sign up for right now, that's like, homesteads and commercial property debt threats, so, other than that, and everything could be done by email or what have you. So as far as, I'm not very surprised by that. We don't need that basically, probably.
Okay.
If we need to, move downstairs and talk to them.
Okay.
Do that, if that's not raining or something, or there's my colleagues.
I skipped Angela.
That's okay. Um, no, my job is not talking to people, and I'm not really doing that right now, so I'm just making calls, so.
Okay.
Turn all the salesmen around.
Matt?
My business is daycare, even sort of, so I don't need anything from you, but I'll do whatever these guys need to stay in the work.
Dave, I'm assuming you're doing the same at the sheriff's office?
Business as usual. I mean, we've implemented precautions and things like that, so obviously, we're going to still deal with the public. I guess so.
And Daryl, over in your office, I'm, you guys have already implemented something.
Well, we've got a secure entry anyway, so we're, it's going to be by appointment only, so I don't know what we're going to do. That's what we're going to do at all costs is stop, everybody's going to stop at the door, no one's going to get buzzed out unless we approve it, if we find some alternative place to be for any other purpose, we'll do that.
Okay.
It's how we're talking about that, don't it? What are we going to do about the food pantry? I'm definitely looking at now that they ring the doorbell. I mean, you have to be letting in, but Tuesdays and Fridays, we have food pantry, and have a personal balance account. Are we going to take orders at the door and have like a long bell? I mean, that's our problem. Something, see how they...
I would serve them at the door, not very men, no different than we're doing anywhere else.
I mean, I think food pantries are going to be one of the things that are going to be necessary with all the kids being home from school.
There's going to be a big increase in food pantry.
Exactly. I think so, too.
I'll get a little by, I'll talk to her, we'll get something set up for you.
Okay. I mean, I think everywhere, we're going to need to post phone numbers. Jessica, like you said, people don't read, but, um, phone numbers for each department or whatever.
I would just put one contact number, and I hate to volunteer my office, but I'm just got to be rather just limited down to one office we can field out, you know? I just, I would rather have one number that people can call.
And you can always transfer it to wherever they have to go.
I mean, I hate that because we're not receptionists, and we're busy, just like everybody else, but if you need to volunteer, five, there's five in my office, we'll get it.
Negative, mine, we do a lot of that when transferring to the treasurer's office.
I'll have another in here at the Capitol calling crisis intervention. You know, say, people come in, are we going to allow that to them? Basically, they come in to their office only and go back in.
Their office, do their business, and back out?
They do that, and they, they ring the door, and they come to the door, and they have to go in.
Okay.
I just don't want to allow that for this school to hear from them.
Personally, I think we need to still allow that.
Jessica?
I have never seen anybody else go beyond their office and their food pantry. They might water it up downstairs a little bit, but, yeah.
Aren't supposed to tell people like that?
That's true story. Guys, we...
Dan? Hang, hang on a second, I got one more.
All my stuff can usually be handled online or by the phone, but I am worried about my outside visits for like water testing and stuff, like in well stuff. Mostly the other clinics around me have said that they're not doing that unless it's on an emergency basis. Personally, I have a hard time imagining any of that's on an emergency, like, hey, an emergency, because if you need a water test, you can buy a water kit. Well, wells are also, if your well's not working, you need water.
True.
But I guess we'll just get it allowed case by case.
Okay. Lynn?
Yeah, I just want a couple comments as far as the county office building. I guess if you, which I would support you closing to the public, but I think if you put something out, be sure and include it's all county office buildings, not just the courthouse, because, I mean, my idea was that we probably would put a sign on our front door that would say, you know, we're closed to the public, please call this number if you need community services, call this number if you need the county attorney. I mean, if we're going to leave the lobby open, we can talk about that, that does leave some exposure. And I also know that, I don't think in our building, we want offices to just do it differently because, you know, just for example, say DHS says they still want people traipsing down through our halls, and we're really not solving anything or any other office, so I think we need to be consistent. But I would also, because the crisis intervention and the food bank are in the basement, those people never, or very seldom, once in a while they come in the front door, but we, we will need to send them around to the back door to get to the food bank, but I do think we are already getting calls about food and stuff, so I think we do need to keep that open, but if you think we need to, you know, have people call ahead and get an order and then just deliver it to the back door for them, I mean, we could maybe, short term, you know, we could maybe help I own in getting those bags to the back door so that people could pick them up, if you think that would be better, but, because I don't think they really have much contact at the restaurant or anything. I don't know, I think they might be okay coming in down there as long as they don't go upstairs.
I, I think it'd still be better to try to serve them at the door just to get that consistency.
Yeah, which would be fine. I don't know that I own can be carrying a lot of bags, but we could certainly, Carol and some of us could help, short term, help her with that if we need to.
Okay. And then you wouldn't expose everybody else to everything in the food pantry as well.
Right.
Because we do see, you know, often people that come to our building are probably not even following precautions, you know, that are set up. So I think we do need to be extra careful.
Okay. I got a question for Daryl. On our agenda since closing of courthouse to the public, would it be okay if we amended that because of this to all public offices?
Reasonable interpretation would be that.
Is it something that we can just make the motion to do that, and then, I don't know, maybe by department head meeting, or let in, I don't know how we want to proceed from there as far as everybody's own?
Can't have a department head meeting.
Well, but each department would then proceed with what they're going to be doing, but we need to limit the access.
We need to give, give direction.
I don't want to say this is how it's going to be handled, and then expect everybody to follow that, their circumstances may be different.
Well, we're, we're going to set the boundaries, and like any boundary, it's a living boundary, there's going to be changes that have to occur, and that goes back to what I was, we have you as the public information officer, we have Thomas. I believe you guys should be able to change boundaries or, or without a board decision.
Shooters or something.
I mean, if you need to post something on the door, post it on the door, go to Renee as that position.
She's the liaison.
You.
Us, as well as being...
But, but from our, from our decision as the board, we are close to public, any, any exceptions that are coming there, we would create exceptions as they go between the department heads, between you or Thomas as to how, the things we talk about.
More procedural type thing.
Yeah, just set the procedures out and they're always gonna be changed. We can't have a more meeting every time we want to change this for one item or three items, but let's try to keep everybody out that we can. That, that's the intent of this.
So, so how long can we try with the expired license? I don't know that governor didn't say.
We don't know how long this is gonna last, Pauline. How, we have it.
The governor did not say.
He said indefinitely. I said that until, until.
When the proclamation is done, that, um, I mean, soon then, because there's gonna be a.
So I mean, we'll be, we'll be okay. We don't have to panic about, you know, like my license is up in March.
Correct.
So you already have 60 days after your expiration. And so if this lasts longer than that, your license is not gonna be considered expired. So I just don't know what decision will be made at that point in time if, when the proclamation is done, is it still gonna be the 60 days after that? I don't know that.
Thomas?
So the proclamation removed that restriction for any enforcement of the expired driver's licenses as long as they were not expired prior to January 17th or January 15th. There's a specific date in there that if they were expired before that, then enforcement's absolutely possible. But at this point, you're gonna get a ticket and you're still gonna have a expired license. But this is an indefinite, so that restriction of expiration on both auto registrations, the paper plates for buying a new car, so they're not stopping you from going and buying a new car, but the paper sticker is still valid for as long as this proclamation, as long as this disaster is in effect.
Thank you. Were there any other conversations we'd like to have before a motion was made?
I feel like it's a given, but should we just drop them please? My employees are not gonna stay home.
I would.
They're sick?
Oh, if you're sick.
They're sick.
Yeah, if you're sick, stay home.
I, I think, I think we need to address that. I, I think that needs to be addressed. I underlined it here, as far as employees, in some places, they're screening their employees as they come to work as well. I, I believe that, yes, if you're sick, stay home, use your sick, these are justifiable. Don't make everybody else, we're trying to keep it contained. Why walk in sick? Um, if you have traveled, I think you should take into consideration that you've traveled and report to your department head and explain to them why you should not come in and they should agree to that. Um, did I cover that?
Exactly.
Okay. Yeah, if you're sick, don't come in.
That's how we should be.
And I would say if you've traveled, especially out of the country, don't come in.
Some people don't think that they're not safe.
Just this morning, they are, even at the state offices, they have cut all travel within the state. And if people are traveling in the state, they are having to report that travel. If they travel out of state, they are self-isolated and doing telework. So even in-state, because the virus is coming from known locations within the state, if you've traveled into those areas and that's an identified location where one of these started, then it'll be a self-isolation.
Who, who do we contact about traveling within the state?
I think contact your department head before you travel.
Okay.
I mean.
For the employees.
Okay, so it's not like you're reporting all your travel plans to some state level? It's within.
No, it's within your, it's within your department. But I think all of us need to understand that this is not, this is not easy for any of us and we need to start limiting where we're going and who we're seeing and all of that.
Thank you.
One question I have, and it came up with other reporters in conversation, that if you have a new hire who hasn't been there, you know, for a year or so, and more than a year, that doesn't have a lot of sick leave, what, what if they get sick? What if they're faced with, are, I don't know, I heard it from the governor or, or what, but be sympathetic to those individuals who don't have that benefit built up. What if they're facing that? Are they gonna go without pay or are they gonna, what happens then?
I would call HR on that to start with. Um, obviously protected by the F M L A. But I don't want to answer that question without talking to HR.
I know personally how I handled it at one point in time, but I don't know that that.
Well, I mean, some sense, common sense has been prevalent. We're not gonna stand in here today to make a decision on everything that takes place. So a lot of it is gonna be very fluid, um, all along. So not to, I don't enjoy your company, but I would say we push things along, the journey and deal with things that come up on a case for case. We're not gonna make any decision in here since then. So.
Okay.
Like common sense prevailed. If you're sick, stay home.
Right.
Social distancing.
Okay.
I think you guys just need to make a decision exactly when this is gonna be started and, and enforced.
Do you want to?
Do, Thomas or Daryl, do you have a, a recommendation on effective date? We say tomorrow, today?
I'd say today, but we need time to be able to, like at noon. So the press has time to get it out. We have time to get it out.
Okay. Okay.
Should know.
Whenever you're ready.
That way we can get it out.
Set the time and date.
Okay. I will make a motion to close the county courthouse and county offices to the public, subject to any exceptions adopted by the county departments, effective, um, today at noon.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call.
Renee?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is the change of status at sheriff's office.
Make a motion to approve the change of status for Katrina Wilcox. It is a resignation as dispatch supervisor, effective March 27th, 2020.
I will second that. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Are none, all, favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Public comments? There are no public comments. I'll ask for other business. Um, we have a public hearing coming up next week. And this will have to be handled by Zoom. So anybody that would like any comments for the public hearing, I believe we should submit them to us by email. Is that correct?
Email or writing, Zoom allows, I believe, for interaction.
Okay.
During that meeting, but we'll need to get the Zoom information out to the public, I think, so they know how to access that.
And since, since it will only be done that way, will the meeting be held here or at our conference room where it's stated?
At our conference.
I mean, and if we're not allowing public access, more or less, we don't have to worry as much about needing the larger space.
Must be six or seven hundred.
Yes.
Right, great. Okay, so.
To all public, I would like to come to the meeting, would have to Zoom in. And how are we gonna get that to them?
Wednesday.
And newspapers?
Agenda.
Newspapers for the public hearing.
Right.
Uh, people won't be able to attend. So they can only attend by Zoom, I guess, or?
Lane still doesn't have.
Cut out.
All right.
Uh, are there any other business?
Do we need any committee signing?
Yes.
I mean, how do we distinguish between courthouse like closed, but still?
Jessica actually just said on her way out that she would be talking with Matt and you could forget that and give the sign to figure it out.
I, I think they're still stopped. They need to address why they're coming in and that's where carries.
What you just talked, inside will be locked.
Yep.
It's.
And honestly, that outside one will be as well. And whoever the guard is, when they see someone approaching, they can hit the button and say, stand back.
But you can't hit the button.
Oh, no, that's right, yeah. But we'll, we'll make sure that whoever that guard is there at the front, nobody comes in, even the best of the old without prior knowledge of why they're there.
You guys are gonna move back then to the wall.
We don't have air conditioning.
But let's, let's let you guys work it out how you're gonna do that.
I think Jessica just said that she'd give you guys about that.
Okay. Here are the business. Are none, I can ask for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all, favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries for adjournment.